We'll call this work session of the common council to order. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Gates.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miles.
Here.
Councilmember Cruss.
Here.
Councilmember Lienfelder.
Excused.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Wade.
Here.
Councilmember Yocum.
Good evening.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. The work session, all work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of the work session meetings is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. We'll start with item number one, TPT ratification discussion. Mr. Bacon.
Thank you, Mayor Gates, members of council. The first item, TPT ratification discussion, and the second discussion regarding implementation of a supermajority requirement for TPT increases and introduction of a big-ticket option are interrelated. And so let me start with the first one, the ratification discussion. The city attorney has provided information to you both at your workshop last Tuesday and then subsequent to that, which I believe makes it very clear that at your special meeting on the 30th of this month, you will be asked to consider three separate items and a vote on each of those items would be required. Four votes would be necessary to adopt each of them. And by doing that for any or all of those three things, the council would be in compliance with the Attorney General's opinion that he sent out earlier in the month regarding proper notification and action by this council. I would defer to the city attorney to make additional comments about the TPT ratification process and then enter into discussion with the council. Carl?
And I think Mr. Bacon pretty much covered the process. It's just a review of what had happened in the past with the notice and the written notice describing the process that you've seen in the packet this time as well as the last meeting. And then, as he noted, we broke up the discussion into three items. Obviously, that's to ensure that everybody's completely aware of the actions that took place then and what plan on taking place, the date for ratification. I don't think there's a whole lot more to go into. It's a pretty straightforward process, and we just wanted to make sure council's aware of what's going on and the public's aware that we are ratifying. And that's the idea, is ratification of that action that took place on the 15th of August.
Mr. Cooper, I do have a question regarding the supermajority.
Correct. Okay.
I believe I read that, can I go there yet?
Let's hold on to that for a minute, Councilmember Cruss, if you don't mind.
All right.
So the only other thing that I was going to add to what the city attorney and I said is that the town hall, which is scheduled for next Tuesday, is not a requirement of the Attorney General when he said you need to do these things to comply. Rather, it is, has been scheduled and will be conducted next week at the request of this council last Tuesday as an additional way to take input from the public. I will have no presentation to make that day, and I don't think the city attorney will either. So we're trying to maximize the amount of time available for people to make whatever comments they want to make to this council. So that's, any questions on the ratification part of this? And we can move to the second, which is where Councilmember Cruss has a question.
Just have a comment. I understand the three votes that are going to be taken on ratification, but since you brought up the agenda for that meeting, I was surprised because one of the things we discussed was having staff give a short presentation, such as we already have. I know we have given it before, but on what these segments are, the people that we're really about to look at and consider ratification for?
Are you talking about at the special meeting? Or are you talking?
I'm talking about the special meeting.
Yeah.
To introduce the town hall.
I expect, I would expect that the city attorney and I will do exactly what you just said, Vice Mayor Miles, at the special meeting. We do not intend to have presentations for the meeting next Tuesday, which is the town hall. I'll get the terminology of town hall down.
Okay, I was really thinking of the town hall because I was thinking it would frame the public discussion.
That was, that was not our understanding of what you wanted to do with the town hall as a council, that you wanted to listen to what they had to say, they being the public that comes next week. And that the presentations that the staff, me, Carl, and myself would make, we made last Tuesday and will make two weeks from tonight. So that's how we understood it. If we understood it wrong, that's one thing, but I'm pretty clear that that's what we heard last Tuesday.
Okay, I just thought we were also going to use it to inform and listen. So that was my understanding, but perhaps that wasn't the council's direction.
That was also my understanding, that you would have a subset of slides from your longer presentation that we had last week that you would start the meeting off with.
If the council would like me to do that, I'm more than happy to do that. I'm just trying to communicate as clearly as I know how that that's not my understanding of what you were expecting for next Tuesday.
Right, I think that some small introduction and the information that you gave us at the budget session was so valuable, and obviously, we can't give them that much. We had also talked about, I think, a handout, something that people could take with them to sort of see some of the numbers and slides from the presentation.
And maybe this is the code break for the look of confusion that I get between Vice Mayor Miles and myself. There are two presentations, one's an information package on the TPT, which members of council have, and the other one is a, I think, 10-slide summary.
Right. I think that's more or less what.
Those are handouts next Tuesday when people come in.
Okay, so they will be given handouts.
They're going to have paper copies. When I heard presentation, I was thinking similar to what I did last Tuesday where I would take time out of the meeting.
Oh, no, 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 no more five-hour presentation.
Yeah.
But that short summary is very informational.
Thank you. The two documents which councils received electronically, the information package on TPT, and then the one which is, I want to say, 10 slides from last week's budget presentation, starts out with the demographic, shows the population, that one.
Yes.
Both of those documents will be available as people come in and sign into the town hall next Tuesday.
And those are available on the website?
They're also available on the website, and we've got the town hall noticed already on the website. I checked that today before I came over.
Well, that, I think, is very good, that those handouts will be here and available. Thank you.
Other questions or comments on item number one?
I did have one question, sorry, I do have one question. This is with respect to the, to the supermajority issue. It was my understanding at the last meeting that one of the reasons we wanted to look at this is that some people were concerned about future councils making changes to designated funds from TPT increases. I know that some people were very concerned that, you know, there was a sunset date for this particular thing and that they, it was their understanding that the, originally the TPT tax increased to help pay for roads, and then they, you know, then they would complain that none of it actually did go to roads. So it was my understanding that the supermajority portion would include some sort of, something that would protect against something like that.
So Councilmember Wade, your question tells me that the group is ready to move on to the second item on the agenda, and I will answer your question as soon as I hear what Councilmember Cruss's question is on the same subject, as she was also asking.
Okay, I apologize about that.
Not a problem. Go ahead, Councilmember Cruss.
I understand, Mr. Cooper, that a supermajority vote would not affect the TPT vote that we're going to have.
Correct.
But it does say, if you do an emergency action, does that mean you can implement it right away?
This wouldn't be an emergency action, as far as I was concerned. You'd have to define some kind of emergency on why that had to go into place effective immediately.
Do you not think a significant tax increase is not an emergency situation?
No.
I do.
No, because one, this is, all we're doing is we're ratifying something that's already taken place, and there's not an emergency based on that because you're not changing the tax rate. You've already changed the tax rate. All you're doing on that meeting is ratifying that action. It is in effect right now, that tax rate.
That's, you're fine. So let me address Councilmember Wade's comments. I think that Councilmember Wade does a good job in framing the rationale behind a supermajority. And for people who are watching or in the audience, the conversation from last Tuesday about supermajority addresses six out of seven members of this council, not five out of seven or some other number. Supermajority could be a lot of different things, and it probably is, from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. The definition that I've used when discussing supermajority is six of the seven would have to agree, and it would, to be an agreement on changing the rate or changing the purpose. That's how I would bring the item to this council. I happen to agree with the city attorney about the ability to find justification for an emergency, and neither of us find that justification. And so that means that the counting of how many days before the ordinance is effective starts with the first night that you approve it and then goes out 30 days. And so it would be close to the ratification action, but it would not be the same and would not, you wouldn't be able to come ahead of that. And I said this last Tuesday, I believe, and if I didn't, I should have, and that is that when I was listening to people over the last five or six weeks, the idea around supermajority, which probably came from me, in all honesty about it, but it wasn't responding to the initial adoption, it was responding to concerns about future councils redirecting those revenues from one purpose to another. So the one that got talked about the most frequently was the local street half a percent, and that they wanted to make sure that there were ways that a future council couldn't take that half a percent and rededicate it to some other purpose. And so that's the basis that led me to suggest a supermajority. And there's nothing at all to prevent this council in the next two or three weeks from simultaneously ratifying the decision you made August 15th, and then also going ahead and adopting an ordinance that creates a supermajority. You could do both of those. It's just to make, and I think the group understands this, it's to make sure that we understand that the supermajority vote does not magically get in front of the ratification vote. The ratification vote happens first and then the supermajority. Everything I just said, by the way, is also true for big-ticket option, except there's another theme from last Tuesday's conversation with the council, and that is you want to see data. And you don't see data because of the Department of Revenue lag for another 10 days, probably, this, to get your November data, and then December data comes a month after that and so on. And so the mechanics of when big-ticket option would take effect are identical to those for supermajority, except this council indicated a clear willingness to see data before, on big-ticket, before they went forward on that one. Yes, ma'am?
I have a comment. So with this supermajority, that obviously, we're looking to impose restrictions on future councils that we're not willing to impose on ourselves.
So that was a comment, there was not a question there, but if there was a question, I'd be more than happy to answer that. And the mayor and I have had this conversation before. The balance of your, let's say you adopted the ratification ordinances and a supermajority within two weeks of each other. That would obligate this council to the supermajority requirements for the balance of your term, as it would for a future council. And again, I just, this is just Jim Bacon, interim city manager. You know, the concern that I was hearing was not about this council as much as it was about what future councils would do. And so that's, that's how come I offered that as a suggestion, and if it doesn't work for this council, I get it. But to me, that's a way to balance the concerns of this council with the concerns of the community regarding the ability of a future council, not this council particularly, to redirect dollars. And so that's all I have to say, and I would take other questions about item two.
I have one other question. It isn't just about redirecting tax dollars. It's also about raising new taxes.
Raising or lowering, it's rate, it's the whole, it's moving, the way I would draft it, it would be about rate and reallocation. Council's perfectly able to modify that, but the draft that I would place before you for consideration in a work session would be to commit as clearly as can be done with this vehicle, what has already been done.
I have a question. The repurposing part of that, would that apply to any repurposing across the budget or just to the 1% that we've dedicated to the project and the program?
I would draft it, a big question, Vice Mayor Miles. In case you hadn't got the theme out of my comments yet, I would be very aggressive on the drafting of this, and so it would apply to any dedicated source of revenue. So if you got 2.5 that's dedicated to the general fund, that applies to the general fund. If you've got a half a percent to local streets, that's what it's for. If it's for capital improvements for a half, that's what it's for. And I'd be, I would not be offended to have that modified by this council, but that's to me the obvious starting point to reflect what I've heard about concerns regarding the council's current effort to earmark, because you have earmarked all three of those things in exactly the way that I described. You know, the 2.5 is earmarked to the general fund, the half a percent to local streets, and the half to capital improvement. So there are no other pieces, parts to the TPT revenue stream to talk about.
Thank you.
Can I get a little more clarification right there? You said the final half is to capital improvement projects. Have those been identified specifically?
What this council, this council actually did in steps, as I think everybody's aware. I mean, the first night was dedicating it to capital improvements, and then that was modified to be directed to two specific capital improvements, and they'll obviously have been identified.
Thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Bacon, I appreciate you offering up this solution. It is one of the concerns that I've also heard a lot from the public, and this seems like something that we can do to help, help make them feel at ease that this money will always be spent with the intent that this council had had, so thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you. I have a quasi-technical point to make about the earmarking on the capital project that got pivoted to two specific projects. As I think everybody else, everybody also knows, the next thought process was that that revenue stream would be converted to debt. Okay? The, one of the ironies of this discussion about a supermajority and keeping the money where it's intended, the easiest way to, the easiest, one of those sources to keep dedicated is the half for the capital projects that got converted, that would get converted to debt, because now you're making debt service payments. And I just can't imagine any finance director not paying attention to that. And so it almost selfdefines the use of those dollars for capital. That's, that protection does not exist for the half a percent for local streets or the 2.5 for the general fund.
Manager Bacon, I have a question based on your technical point.
Go ahead.
Would the conversion of the revenue stream to debt service require a supermajority vote?
I don't, I don't believe it would.
Okay, thank you.
Are we going to have any other discussion on the big-ticket option or?
No, these are, this is just to give council background, and at some point in the next two weeks, we're going to ask for direction on some things, and these two will be on that list.
Thank you. So we can move on to item three. Is there no other questions or comments from council? Item three, I-11 East Kingman Program Manager Update.
The city council earlier in, earlier in 2017, in 2017, created a group to obtain proposals on this topic and to review the people who, the firms that responded. That group has met, and I think because we asked Greg to go out and see what was at the counter, he was elected the chairman of that group. And so he's here tonight to give a report on the group's findings. Greg?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's actually October 3rd of last year, 2017, at the special council meeting at the city complex where the, and this is just to refresh everyone on where we got to and where we're at now. The council decided at that meeting to jointly combine the Kingman Crossing and the Rancho Parkway interchange and label them as the I-11 East Kingman Connection Project. And then also at that meeting, there was direction to staff to create an RFQ for a program manager to come in and manage the projects as one project. Staff went ahead and prepared the RFQ and presented a draft RFQ at the November 7th regular council meeting here at the Mojave County building. And we took advice from council on that and put the RFQ out on the street thereafter of that meeting and with a due date of December 15th. And on that date, we received two proposals, two statements of qualifications from firms for the program manager, one for Matrix Design Group and one for Mojave Engineering. As Jim indicated, we had a committee of seven that reviewed those statements and unanimously recommended Matrix Design Group out of Phoenix as the most qualified program manager for what council was looking for. So a letter's gone out to both of those firms and to other various agencies, plan rooms around the state, that that's our selection. So the next step at this point is to begin negotiations on the scope of work for this program manager. I've included in your agenda packet here tonight the original request for qualifications that has a kind of a draft outline of the scope we were thinking of that we discussed with council back in November. And probably we'll see a lot of those items in the scope from Matrix as they bring that forth. And so our idea at this point is to develop a draft scope at the staff level and then bring that back to council for future review and direction from the council at a later date. I mean, I would expect, I think we'll probably get something from Matrix within the next week or so, and then we'll be in contact with them on that with any additions or changes at the staff level, and then schedule it hopefully for one of the meetings in February for council to review. That's kind of all, we just, that's mainly what we want to do, is just update you and see if there's any questions or additional direction at this point.
Any questions of staff?
No questions, just thank you for leading the effort to do this RFQ and the good evaluation and analysis that the team did to conduct this process. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rick.
Moving on to item four, proposed fee increases.
Mayor Gates, members of council, as Tina comes to the microphone, she is going to give you a brief, underscore brief, series of comments regarding a 22-page document that she generated not too long ago called "General Citywide Services Fee Increase 2017 Proposed." And the, as you go through it, if you haven't had a chance to do that, every couple of pages, the topic changes in terms of where the fees are being discussed. So like, the first two pages are general administrative fees, next two pages are licenses, and then it keeps going like that until you get down on the last page, which are about CART fee, actually fee reductions in CART's case. There's a lot to digest here for both the council and the user fee community, and so we just wanted to give you kind of an advance alert that these fees are being discussed. And with that, Tina's here to talk about the proposed fee increases. Tina?
So just real quickly, and really just as Mr. Bacon has stated, to communicate that the proposed fee increases will be coming to you at the next council meeting. So, there we go. So the purpose of this particular proposed fee increase, there are four of them really, and one of them is to develop a policy for the periodic review of the city's local user fees. Currently, some of the fees have been 10 to 20 years, and that's certainly not an ideal frequency of review. Also, one of the purposes is to create a comprehensive fee schedule for the ease of reference for internal and external users. Right now, the fees are all over the place, difficult to find in some, in some areas, and so having them all in one location will be a much easier reference for all of us. Of course, the biggest impact is adjusting the fees to recover the costs of the services being provided, and then, of course, to standardize some of those citywide fees, such as copy fees, CD fees, that all departments are charging but at different rates. So to standardize those fees. We've talked about the timeline and how this has been a very long project. It started in September of 2016. We've had work sessions on it, we've had a town hall, and finally, in November, we were able to post the fees and move forward with the 60-day notification process, and so that's why it will be coming to you in February. A list of these fees, you've seen this several times, and really, it's just about every single division's or department's fees are looking to be proposed for increases as well as some new fees for some of the departments. It is going to impact the general fund, the water fund, and the wastewater fund. And I did want to point out, on these particular fees, on the posting that was made public, there were nine fees that in my grouped worksheet came over incorrect, and so they're actually saying golf fees on nine of them. So those are nine fees that we will not be considering for the proposed fee increase. They will be removed, but all of the others will be considered.
Are you saying that there will not? Are you saying that there will not be increases to the golf course fees?
No, I'm saying nine of the fees in all 17 pages of the fees proposed have an incorrect fee, proposed fee that says golf course fee on it. It was just a mistake on my worksheet, so those nine fees that are throughout all of the departments will not be considered. It actually is going to affect the general citywide services. It will It will affect the background check fees for the police department. It will affect two of the fees in fire, two of the fees in P&amp;Z, and two of the fees in engineering. It will not affect the golf course fees that are being proposed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Maline?
Yes.
So on something like planning services, where it has the 18-hole, like, that has a $2,000 existing fee and that will stay, is that right?
The existing fee will stay, the proposed fee just will not be reviewed. And depending on the vote of the council next, next council meeting, will determine whether or not we decide to proceed with moving forward with possibly proposing those nine fees in the future.
I did have a question. And I know this is published, so it's a little too late, I think, but on something like, under planning, under subdivision review, where the fee is being reduced from 300 to 200 on page 10. And we're trying to go for cost recovery and we're only at 8% cost recovery. I was just wondering what decision process was made to reduce those types of fees?
So that would have to be a, Mr. Ruggles, each department came up with their fees and so I am not certain. Let me see exactly what you're looking at by ceremony on that.
It's on page 10, just, there were a couple of them and, and same thing, there were two of a minor land division and subdivision review where they actually reduced the fee, but the cost recovery elements are so low at 13% and 8%. I just thought, well, if we're trying to go for cost recovery, we kind of...
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Miles, let me jump in here.
Saying.
Tina, do you have another slide or is that, that's?
It's almost, I have only two more slides.
Okay. And now's, now's a good time, I think, to make this comment. And I actually thought about what I was going to make this comment tonight because of that slide that Tina gave that shows it goes back to 2016 and all through 2017, and here it is 2018. And, and some person gets hired six weeks to be the interim city manager. I'm not sure I'm going to recommend approval of all these fees.
Okay.
Just so you know, that what Tina's giving you is the maximum recommended fee schedule by category. You know, I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to recommend the CART fees because they reduced their annual permit reduction.
Okay, thank you, sir.
That's easy for me to say, yeah, I can do that. But a, a number of these other fees, I'm not, I'm not sitting here tonight telling you I'm ready to recommend approval of that. I asked Tina to come tonight to make sure the council was aware of the scope of the fees. And, you know, when I, I'm looking at a piece of paper that's 22 pages doing a fee comparison, just by nature reluctant to say, yeah, I'm all in on, on recommending all these fees. So don't be surprised in a couple of weeks when this is on the agenda that the manager's recommendation is something other than to recommend adoption of all the fees.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Tina, go ahead.
Okay. So with that, just the next steps, we were asked to hold a public outreach meeting. This date is incorrect. I had put this on the agenda before the work session lack, last week when we were trying to schedule the public information meeting for the TPT ratification, not knowing when it was going to be next week. So we have moved the public outreach meeting out to January 29th. It will be at the council chambers at 5:30 and we are going to post these notices. The city clerk's office actually just put that notice together today. I haven't had a chance to look at it, but it'll be posted at all of the different departments' lobbies. We'll put it on our Facebook page and also on our website. And then the public hearing, of course, to adopt the proposed increases will be at the next council meeting on the 6th. And with that, I'll try to answer any other questions.
I just have a comment, since these are going to be considered by Manager Bacon and of course by the public. One of the things that surprised me, having recently made copies in the private sector at two different locations, our copy fees are double or more than the private sector. And I thought, is that really, what message are we sending there? So I'm glad you're going to look at these fees and, and I think we, it needs good, good look by the manager and by the public.
One of, one of the things that I may do, which is atypical, because you've heard over and over again, put it in work session and then two weeks out. If I get to the point where I'm not going to recommend this entire schedule, I may add this topic again as a work session so the council knows where the staff is in advance of the public hearing. Doesn't affect the business part of the meeting, though. Still have the public hearing and still able to take action. Any other questions for Tina tonight? On this item?
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Item five, discussion regarding combination of EDMC and TDC.
It's me again. And as I think most of you are aware, the EDMC and the TDC were both asked to make a recommendation on whether or not the two entities should be merged into a brand-new commission. We've heard back from EDMC, they unanimously voted in December to merge the two entities. It's been on the TDC agenda the last two months in a row and they have not responded. And two weeks from tonight, three weeks from tonight, I will be in front of this council during a work session talking about economic development. And one of my recommendations will be to have a commission to deal with economic development. So creating a new commission out of the EDMC and, and TDC is absolutely consistent with that. It's on tonight's agenda for two reasons. One is a member, Councilman Yocum, wanted to talk about it tonight. And number two, one of the things that he wanted to talk about, which I absolutely agree with, is how you go about filling the commission. I will recommend, just so you know, I'll recommend a seven-member commission. And so there's, there's really two ways to go about that. One is the time-honored, well, we'll just over, overfill it and, and attrition will take care of it, method. And so sometime between now and 2020 or 2022, we might actually have a commission. The other approach is the one that I'm more comfortable with is we, we being the council, take action to eliminate the two existing commissions and to create a new one that comes complete with its own statement of purpose and, and all those other things that we've talked about before is needing to be filled in for commissions. And then you seek applications from people who are interested in serving. And this council is the one who makes that appointment process. That process that I just outlined, hopefully will become familiar to you and you'll choose to replicate it on a lot of your other citizen boards and commissions. But to me, that's start is to say, we've got a new one, we'll take applications, thank the people on the, on the two that are being eliminated for their service. And then council makes a decision on who serves and the commissions in business be staffed, by the way, by the Economic Development Director. And Councilmember Yocum, what did I miss?
I think you covered it fairly well. One thing I was interested in seeing that new commission have is a, an evening meeting time, more typical and standard with our other evening meetings of about, of 5:30. And I would suggest, I think it's the second Wednesday of the month. I think currently EDMC was the second Wednesday in the morning.
In the morning, yeah, I think that's true. So. So that's the presentation that you're going to hear the highlights of again in three weeks. But the, the, the main reason to put it on tonight is to give the council some opportunity to start thinking about how you want to do the process. You heard the process that I would choose outlined. You heard another alternative, which I've actually lived through. And, and there might be a third or a fourth, but I, I clearly in the, if we're starting with a new commission, let's, let's take applications and have the council make the decision.
And those that are sitting on the commissions are obviously encouraged to apply as well.
They're encouraged to apply and, and you can obviously consider their candidacies along with whoever else chooses to apply.
You're recommending that is, goes directly to the council versus through a recommendation from?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's what, thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I almost put it on as a, as a future work session item. And then I realized that this is kind of like an opportunity to, to see what it works like when the council is the one taking the applications. They're, they're made to the city clerk. Clerk copies all the applications for the council. Council looks at them and it's not, frankly, it's no different than when you're considering who to hire for interim city manager. And, and so I just think that is a preferable process to the, to the recommended from the commission approach that you guys have been using on a lot of things. And in this case, you don't have a commission to, to make the recommendation, so it's pretty obvious in this instance.
I have a request, please. If we could find a way to have some central data bank for these applications. I know I'll get one and then three months later, there's a vacancy and I forget about that applicant.
I'm looking at the central, I'm looking at the central data bank.
Okay.
Right now.
Right. Additionally, we don't know sometimes unless you're a liaison.
We'll make that happen for you.
Right. If there's a vacancy, we're not aware of it. And that would give us an opportunity to really reach out into the community and bring in some, some talent.
And I, and I, and Mayor and I have actually talked about this before. I'm, I'm really serious about the council reconsidering how you do the appointments of all your citizen boards.
Yes.
And commissions. So that you're, you're really considering them as the appointments that you, as a council, are comfortable with making. You know who the applicants are, you have an opportunity to interview them. You get, I mean, I could, we can lay this out in, in more detail, not only for this opportunity, but more broadly if you'd like.
I really enjoy these work sessions because we get to lay some groundwork that I think's important. There was an attachment to this agenda item and it was a markup and it was a quick markup of, you know, I guess the existing ordinance about this and, you know, it, it really is inadequate. And so, and I think that's an understatement. So I'm hearing that when this comes back, that this is going to be reframed.
Yeah.
And in a way that is, so that this commission knows what it is to be and what it is to do.
That would be, that would be our joint hope.
Yeah.
If that's what happens.
And also that it is aligned, even in name, with our Department of Economic Development and Tourism. And also that it characterizes the linkages with which this commission works. I think that should be true of all of our commissions, both internal and external.
Right.
Because how does it, how does it fit in our framework? So I'm, I'm encouraged to hear that it is going to look very different when it comes back.
It is. The, the reason we did that, and it, again, the, the primary reason it's on the agenda tonight, because it's also going to be on in three weeks, is to give you a chance to think about the selection process that you're comfortable with. And I was seeing a lot of non-verbal positive feedback about having the process be application to the clerk's office. Council sees all of them, makes their appointments from that list and, and that's how the, the members are seated. The part that you're talking about is important in three weeks when I'm talking about how that committee or commission fits in with the economic development strategy of the city.
And it also is critical in how we will be able to select who's on that commission because it will be the defining, you know, construct for what we're looking for and trying to implement. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to confirm too, that the commission retreat and orientation meeting is scheduled for February 24th. Is that not right?
The city clerk is nodding her head, that's right. So that must be right.
Excellent.
Yes.
Since we're talking about the, the process.
Yeah.
Which we put people on commissions, it's really important, right now, we don't find out too far in advance that we're getting ready to fill an opening. So it, it helps so much if we knew that in a month, there will be an opening on the following commission. We're going to see that on the agenda and vote so that if we have somebody in mind, that gives them time to apply. You know, it just gives us time to prepare, basically.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to get too far off topic here. And maybe I should just put this on a work, as a work session topic. But in an idealized world, there's a calendar, you know, right? That, that lays out when your commission and committee appointments are. And then you back off of that by an amount of time you're comfortable to get app, to notify, have public notification that there's an, an opening, to give people an opportunity to file an application with the clerk, to have the council review those applications and then make an appointment from that process. And, and so we'll, in fact, I, you know, I just, as I'm reflecting on this, well, the next time you see a work session calendar, you know, the now famous work session calendar, there'll be an item on that talks about how we do this process in a more structured way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Moving on to item six, Parks Flood Control Property Acquisition.
Greg is back to talk to us about an opportunity that may exist for the, the city to acquire a parcel of property that serves two purposes, one for flood control and one is parkland. So here's Greg to provide the details. Greg?
Good evening again, thank you, Jim. We're talking specifically about parcel 30514013C. It's located at the southwest of the intersection of Anson Smith Road and North Harvard Street. It's currently vacant land, has a RR zoning. A gentleman by the name of Edwin Ted Parks has, has been in to meet with staff on a pre-development meeting for possibly developing that property. And, and the idea of possibly selling the property to the city came up at a meeting in November. We asked Mr. Parks to follow up with a letter if he was serious about selling this property to the, to the city. He's provided that letter and outlined his cost that he has into the property to date. We, staff, and I've, I've spoken with Director Mearsman from the Parks Department on, on his possible future, for possible future park acquisition of, of this property. He likes that. He's kind of hoping for maybe something a little bigger, but there is some vacant land just west of this that might one day be, be available that the city could acquire as well for parks. And I, I just want to point out, there was, oh, three or four years ago now, there was a, there was a proposed park site just to the north and east of this at the intersection of Harvard Street and Sycamore that the city was going to look at acquiring and for one reason or another, that, that deal fell through. It's, it's a slightly larger property than this. But it's in the same general area. There, there's no parks in this part of town now. We're, we're talking west of the hospital, north of I-40 there. The reason I'm, I'm here is, is I like it as a potential future flood control basin that we might be able to capture some drainage that comes off the hills there and store it and detain it and allow it to trickle out as we've done at some other areas around town, specifically Railroad Street and Southern and Eastern Street and Southern. A similar concept to those. And also certainly haven't done any sort of soils analysis or subsurface investigations there, but you know, the, the idea of potentially capturing the runoff and then letting, letting it percolate into, to replenish our groundwater is certainly potential there as well. And, and again, I, I say that with a caveat that we don't know that the underground would, would allow that there, but it's certainly something to pursue if the city were to acquire this. We could certainly detain the water and hopefully percolate it at some point. So our question was, does, you know, does the council agree with this concept and, and like the idea and do we proceed from here?
Madam Mayor, I have a couple of questions from Mr. Henry. Is there a flooding problem in this area now that this will solve?
There is a, there is a problem. The, the drainage that comes through this area, and I, I can pull up the map, but... There is a, there is a problem, the, the drainage that comes through this area, and I, I can pull up the map, but it gets into Wilshire Avenue and makes its way to Western. And then from Western, it kind of flows north to the, to Sycamore Avenue. There's a dermatology center there that has received water in the building from flooding. The building's lower than the street, so anything that overtops the street in that area is a potential problem for this building. I'm talking about Arizona Dermatology Building there at the corner of Western and Sycamore. So in the specific area where we're looking to capture this, I'm not aware of any specific drainage problems, but we can certainly alleviate some downstream from, from there.
Okay, so you're aware of one building that was flooded. And it, do you have budget money to purchase this piece of property?
We do, we do. We have a hundred thousand identified in the flood control budget for land acquisition. And it's, it's, it's just general land acquisition that, to be determined. And in this case, this, we think this is certainly a valid area to look at.
I apologize if I missed it, but how much is this, is this individual asking for this land?
So this is the part where the city manager jumps in to say, the reason that Greg's here is to see if the council's interested in us pursuing this, this idea. If, in fact, the majority of you are interested, then Greg's next step will be to meet with the property owner, try to negotiate a price which is consistent with appraised value and then report that back to the council for your consideration. So we haven't taken this to the level of price yet. We're, we're, he's here tonight to see if you're interested in, in the idea and that's as far as we've taken it.
And the purpose, the primary purpose is flood control, right? The secondary, we're not talking about building a full-scale park.
Yeah, I would think that's an accurate statement.
Okay, because I would think, I was going to ask about development costs, would that come out of this money as well?
Development costs would be separate later on.
That's what I thought.
In his December 8th letter, Mr. Parks identifies forty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. And as his asking is what he's got into the land. Typically on, on acquisitions, the city covers the closing costs, the escrow fees. And, and I would estimate those maybe in the range of twenty-five hundred to three thousand for this property acquisition. So be, in my estimation, maybe forty-eight, forty-nine thousand dollars.
Thank you.
I personally think it's a great project. There's nothing in that area, no kind of recreational. And I, I do know that when it does rain, sometimes it really pours. So this would definitely fill a couple of needs, one, one being that floodwater detention and stop some of the flooding in the area.
I agree. Yes, I agree because I've been on Western and Sycamore in that area when it is flooding and it's, it gets a lot of water. And that is a very developed area in turn, I see a lot of houses. I know there's a church there close to this property.
In fact, the church, I understand, has been flooded as well.
And the church, yes, yes, and has a beautiful mural on it, so, or did. So I, I really am supportive of it also, moving forward.
Councilmember Staley.
Is there a possibility on a, a project like this where we could work with the county flood control and see if there isn't grant money to also help offset some of the costs? Is that something they do or?
Well, the, the money that we're proposing to spend on this is, is flood control money that the city has received from the county.
Oh, great, okay.
So, and that would strictly just be for acquisition. If it gets developed into a park, then of course there would, you know, in order to meet other development standards, we would probably want to add curb and gutter and paved parking and the sorts of things that, that other developments would have. But, and those, there would be additional costs at a future time for those.
Based on a comment from the city manager, I, I imagine we don't, we, we haven't yet seen an appraisal or anything for the value of the land.
No, I had asked if there was one done and I was, I was told that there was one, but I've, I've not actually seen it.
Okay.
And I would, I would pursue that further from this point if council is in agreement to, to pursue this.
Any other questions?
One more question, if you could pick an area that gets flooded the worst, and I recognize this is just an opportunity that's popped up, but where would you rate this on your scale of criticalness, if that's a word, for flooding? I've now heard that there's two buildings that have been flooded, dermatology office and a church.
Yeah, and I, and I know, I understand that the hospital and speaking with their building maintenance guy, they, some of the water actually had overtopped Western and got into the hospital parking lot and caused some problems with their backup generator. So I'll, that, that'll add another third one. As far as criticalness, I would say that, you know, the hospital is a crucial building that we want to remain open in any sort of flooding situation. And, and so with that added known tidbit there, I would say it's, it's, it is pretty critical. A majority of the water that, that gets into Sycamore comes from further north, so I don't know that we'll be able to capture certainly everything that, that, that causes all the, the drainage over there. But there's, there's also some property that's yet undeveloped that this, that this will benefit from, that it'll allow them to have less drainage. That there's some vacant land in between this property and Western. And specifically there, just east of Fairfax, between Wilshire and Sheldon where a lot of the drainage that comes through this area flows through and it's currently vacant property now, there's no specific drainage easements or drainage ways that were identified for it because a subdivision was created years ago. So this would help those properties as well. I would, I would rate it high, I don't know if you're going to pin me to a scale of one to 10, but I would, I would rate it fairly high as far as being critical to.
Thank, thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions of staff?
You do have a list though of those areas that have flooding issues, right?
Yeah, and we have, and certainly our CIP that we'll be talking about, just around the corner from here, will have a list of flood control, specific flood control projects.
So, thank you Mayor and members of council. Greg and the staff will pursue this matter with the property owner and try to reach a position where we can bring it back to you for your consideration in an exec session that deals with the property acquisition cost and any other associated items a property owner might want to bring to your attention. Thanks Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Final item on our work session this evening is item seven, discussion regarding creation of an airport advisory commission. Mr. Ben.
Thank you. This is on, just to, from my perspective, just to confirm with the council that it's my intention to ultimately recommend to the council, consistent with your discussion at a previous work session, to have aviation be a city department, that there would be an advisory, excuse me, an advisory commission. I, I'm not ready to tell you what it looks like tonight. It was suggested at our last meeting that it might look like the transit advisory commission and that seems like a reasonable first model to look at. But all I'm prepared to say tonight is I expect to recommend to you that there will be one. But I have a series of tasks ahead of me on, on the airport that frankly come ahead of the commission part. So I, I don't know what else to tell you except that that's, that's my expectation. And it, at least for a starter, will kind of look like the transit advisory commission and its, its purpose. For those of you who don't remember the, the conversation about this from last time, and we're going to get into it in three weeks when we talk about economic development, one of the challenges of that site is that the airport is concurrently an airport and an industrial park. And I'm all interested about the airport advisory committee dealing with the airport part, but I haven't decided at all about the, the best way to have the industrial park part of the airport gain, if you will, a citizen oversight. And so that'll, that'll take a while, but definitely an airport advisory commission is in your future.
I, I had requested this item in large part because I was interested in hearing other council members' input, their thoughts on how we've, how they thought we might structure this relative to the industrial park as well. And because I would expect this to be a quasi managerial and/or advisement board or commission to help replace and a piece of, a piece that I would want to have in place when the, the presumed-to-occur condemnation takes place. Something I want to have in place before then, get ahead of the curve on that.
Yeah, no, I, gosh, where do I start in response to that? I, I am really clear that this council wants to have a Department of Aviation and not an airport authority. We had this conversation earlier, so I'm, I'm real clear on that. I see the airport therefore being essentially a Department of City Government, reporting to the city manager, probably. About ninety percent to that position. I see the, this committee that we're talking about, I see that doing what it says, advising. I don't, I don't see a managerial role for it. To me would be hard to explain how it's a managerial role, but it's really not and get it right. And so, so we're, I, I think it's man, I, I think it's advisory and I'm, and that's the basis upon which I'm proceeding, so, thank you.
May I ask a, a question?
Yep.
Because I, I may have this assumption wrong. I can't envision any scenario where overnight the city would take over the airport. It's my understanding, there is a series of steps and there's a series of permissions and consents and it's a process. So I mean, I, I appreciate the, I like the idea of the advisory commission. I'm just not feeling that sense of urgency and please correct me if I'm wrong.
Urgency is driven by the courts in this case. And so the staff's job is to be ready to implement once there's a court decision. And so that's what we're doing now. We're, if you will, putting the pieces on the table that are going to be part of, of the solution to this. And so that, in our minds, the, the advisory committee is one of those pieces. You know, the ability to have a staff person is another one. And, and then, if you will, the permissions, you know, that, that, that the city would require to have to be able to operate the, the airport on its own. That's a third part. And so there, there are a lot of moving parts, if you will, to this decision. And, you know, that we've assumed, I think, informally, that, that there's going to be someday where a, a judge says, and this is how we decide, right? And, and that the city would prevail. Assume that that's right, right? That doesn't mean necessarily the judge is going to say effective today. The judge could say effective in ninety days, effective in thirty days, effective in, you know, some N number of days. And so that's what makes it an interesting managerial challenge is you know what, you know what the end looks like, but you don't know how quickly you're going to have to be there and you don't know how quickly it's going to take, or you're going to be required to have a lot of the, if, as the mayor just described, them permissions in place. So that's all I have to contribute on the airport tonight.
Any other questions or comments? So seeing none, would that conclude the work session?
Yeah, and then with council's permission, we have two items in exec. And rather than sit here for twenty-seven minutes, I would appreciate it if you wanted to manage your time a little bit better to move to modify the agenda, go into executive session. And we will stand a very good chance of being back out here by seven o'clock.
Okay, so, so having said that, let's entertain a motion to close the work session. And, and move to executive session, so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Okay, we'll be back ideally by seven o'clock, thank you for your patience.
Do we have to call the meeting? Do we have to call the meeting? Do we have to call the meeting?
Good evening. We'll call this regular meeting of the common council to order. We already took roll call, no need to do that again. As the invoker here this evening, the invocation this evening would will be given by Pastor Peter Ernst. Please stand for the invitation or remain standing for the pledge. Good evening.
Thank you for the privilege. Shall we pray? Father God, we're thankful here tonight for living in a free country. Thank you, Lord, for the blessings that come with that as well as the responsibilities and the privileges. We thank you for those who have the rule over us, for as the Apostle Paul said, we need to honor them because they have to give an account for how they legislate. And so, Father, I pray that you give them wisdom tonight. Thank you for our federal government, thank you for our state government, our local government, thank you for our mayor and city council members, thank you, God, for those that serve us in this community. We pray, God, that you give them wisdom tonight and, Lord, as they deliberate, we pray that it would be for the best of the people that live here in this great community. Bless these these people represented here this evening and, Lord, may we seek your your wisdom, your counsel, knowing that you work all things together for good to those who love you, to those who are the called according to your purpose. Now, we pray this in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Item 1A, regular meeting minutes of January 2nd, 2018. You've had the opportunity to review any changes, corrections, or additions?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to item two, appointments. 2A, appointment of youth to Youth Advisory Commission. Discussion and consideration of appointing applicant Lakin Mulder to a one-year term on the Youth Advisory Commission. There are currently five vacancies and no additional applicants. Staff recommends approval. We received a phone call that our applicant is like quite a few in our community and has fallen ill with the flu. So, the applicant is unable to be here this evening. We do understand there is a recommendation of the board and is there anyone in the in the audience that wishes to address the the council on this item? Oh, here it comes.
And I'm Hannah.
And we're part of the Youth Advisory and we recommend Lakin for the position on our board.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you for taking the time to be here this evening.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we follow their recommendation and approve Mr. Mulder to be on this commission.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Moving on to item B, Appointment to Transit Advisory Commission. The terms of Transit Advisory Commission member, member Justin Hembray and Jed Noble ended on December 31st, 2017. At the commission's last quarterly meeting, members recommended the reappointment of Justin Hembray to serve another term on the Transit Advisory Commission. Staff recommends reappointing Justin Hembray to serve a three-year term on the Transit Advisory Commission, which will end December 31st, 2020. Is the applicant here this evening? Hi.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Mr. Hembray had a pre-engagement, so he was unable to attend today. But I did want to just let you know that he is the WACOG Transportation Program Manager. He's very knowledgeable and has been extremely valuable on the commission. He was appointed about a year ago to fill the term of vacancy that came by when one of our members had passed. So, he's had one year served and would like to serve another. The commission recommends that he be reappointed.
Well, I serve with him on that WACOG board and I know what a what a professional he is and what what he brings to to the meetings. So, thank you for sharing that. Any questions? Anyone in the audience wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Justin Hembray to serve a three-year term on the Transit Advisory Commission.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item three, awards recognition. We have a proclamation this evening for Interfaith Harmony Week. Whereas the World Interfaith Harmony Week was first proposed at the U.N. General Assembly on September 23rd, 2010 by H.M. King Abdullah II of Jordan, whereas the 2010 U.N. General Assembly approved unanimously the first week of February as the U.N. World Interfaith Harmony Week, according to the proposal. And whereas the Constitution provides for the freedom to practice the rights of one's religion and faith in accordance with the customs that are observed in the United States unless they violate public order or morality, and now therefore I, Monica Gates, Mayor of the City of Kingman, State of Arizona, do hereby proclaim February 1st through the 7th, 2018, to be designated as World Interfaith Harmony Week. And in doing so, urge all citizens to join me in observing this week by upholding and fostering interfaith harmony. Is there anyone in the audience here to receive this?
We are the Kingman Unified Pastoral Association and I would just like to have each of us introduce ourselves. We're quite a unique group. We've been meeting for four years and we include all denominations in our organization. And we hold two ecumenical forums a year, primarily at the LDS Chapel on Eastern on various topics that relate to our various traditional backgrounds.
Father Leonard Walker, Independent Catholic and Divine Savior Catholic Community.
The Reverend Don Hagman from St. John's United Methodist Church.
Rabbi Mindy Snyder, Congregation Lev Shalom.
Father Philip Shaw, Trinity Episcopal Church.
Imam Umar Farouk Mahmood from Masjid Ibrahim.
Chaplain Paul Pitt, United States Air Force.
Vance Miller of the Church of Jesus Christ, the Latter-day Saints.
Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. We do have some people signed up to speak this evening. First is Harley Pettit.
Mayor, Council, my name's Harley Pettit, resident of Kingman. As elected councilperson, you have to be honest and trustworthy. You have to be a representative of the people. When that trust is violated, faith in our government is jeopardized. Honesty, integrity, and credibility. I'm going to ask for the resignation of Councilmember Travis Langenfelder.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Will Ifland?
Good evening, Council. My name is Will Ifland. I'm a resident of Kingman and I don't want to be repetitive, but my comments are for the whole council. And I'm really responding to the article that was in the paper today about the, you know, the alleged plagiarism by an individual of council who wrote an article and it was it's a controversial subject that's going on. But my concern is for everybody is the integrity of the council itself and that you hold a position of trust. And what bothers me about any councilmember who goes and and basically takes credit for something that really wasn't his, and particularly on such a controversial issue, it makes me wonder about the about the his respect for the people because you're going out to the general population, also a respect for the office that he holds because it is a position of trust. And I also would think that every councilmember should think and think about the effectiveness of any councilmember who compromises himself in this manner. And I would like people to think about this and if you think this is justified, then I would also call that maybe you should step down and issues that you're passionate about, maybe you should standing on this side of the podium and not on that side. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ifland. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak. Is anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Is there anything on the consent agenda anyone wishes to have removed for discussion?
Madam Mayor, there's two topics I'd like removed from the consent agenda and that would be items 5D and 5E, please.
Pardon me, D and E?
D and E. And Mayor, item C needs to be withdrawn. It will it will appear in three weeks as an item for action under the new business.
Thank you. And any anything else you wish to have removed?
I'd like to pull 5F.
F? I thought we already had F. We had E as well?
No, D, E. She had D and E.
D, E, F. Okay. So, that makes it a very small consent agenda for approval.
That would be items A and B, Mayor.
As presented, yes, entertain a motion to approve items A and B on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve items 5A and 5B on the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Do we need a motion to to strike item C?
No.
No? All right. So, let's start discussion on item D, Approval of Professional Services Agreement with Hazen and Sawyer Incorporated for Fiscal Year 18 Distribution Main Replacement Project. Fiscal Year 18 Distribution Main Replacement Project consists of engineering design services and preparation of plans and specifications to replace approximately 15,358 feet of various sizes of existing water mains in five different locations that have been identified as priority in the Water Master Plan Update. This project will be funded by the Water Capital Renewal Fund. The approved budget for this project, design and construction, is at $1 million. Staff recommends council approve the agreement and authorize the mayor to sign on the city's behalf. Good evening, Rob.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is a water line replacement project with the completion of the Water Master Plan Update. We've got a priority list of replacement projects. These were this particular project was taken from several of those higher priority replacement projects identified. Again, it's funded with the Water Capital Renewal Fund and I can try to answer any questions you might have.
I I'm going to combine these two topics because it's a general concern that I have. I've gotten feedback, and I think it's very good feedback, that we do not consider local consulting firms that they believe have the skill set to do the same job, that they are not aware that these requirements are open by the city and give them the opportunity to at least be aware of the jobs. I recognize that for both consulting agreements, it's below the dollar requirement to to have an RFQ go out. I recognize that. But my concern is keeping business locally when we can.
Yes, ma'am. And just to summarize the process a little bit, Title 34 of Arizona revised statutes allows for direct hire or request for qualifications. It requires a request for qualifications if the services are going to be over half a million dollars. We had initially hired Hazen and Sawyer for the first project out at the Hilltop Treatment Plant. That was a injection well project. They were hired because they had specific experience on many different injection well projects. We also looked at them for item E because which is that's the equipping and transmission main for Citywell 10. And again, they have many cases of specific experience in that field. While they were here, we asked them to give us a scope for the water line replacements. Some of these projects are are technical and specific and again, if we can identify engineering firms that have that kind of specific experience, then then that's generally who we've been contacting. But the the method of procurement for Hazen and Sawyer is similar to the the method of procurement for Sunrise Engineering on some of the projects that have come through in the last few months. It does meet state statutes and it does meet the City of King procurement code.
Yeah, and I'm not challenging that at all. I I understand all of that and I respect that they've done work for us and it's work that you're happy with. It seems that they work well with the city. My my only concern is that if we don't give local firms the awareness that these jobs are coming up, that we we're possibly doing a disservice to them. That's my only concern.
So, if I might, Mayor Gates, members of council, I I've asked the city engineer to meet with the people in the local engineering services community.
meet with the people in the local engineering services community to make sure that they understand how that they can access these opportunities in the future, and I'm sure that he will do that. I'd also point out to the council that in the two particular instances on tonight's calendar, staff is very comfortable with the recommendation to proceed with the firm that's identified in items D and E.
Thank you for taking the initiative to gather up our local engineering folks. That'll be a good move. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Did you have any other questions?
No.
Councilmember Rob. All right, so you wanted to take those two items as one. I'll entertain a motion to approve item D and E on the consent agenda.
I would make a motion to approve items 5D and E on the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item F on the consent agenda, Adoption of Ordinance Number 1849, Amending Council Liaison's Terms on Commissions. Adoption of Ordinance Number 1849, Amending Council Liaison Terms on Commissions. Staff recommends approval. You had a question, Vice Mayor Miles?
I do, because when I read this, what, the strikeout version, it appears to me we're doing two things. One, we are taking out the one-year commitment, but also we are taking out the majority vote for the appointments.
Well, when I look back at how we did that in the past, the majority vote, you still have to do a majority vote, but it would have, the way it was currently written, would have required each appointment to be done excluding the affected councilperson trying to join that commission, that particular commission. I felt, I don't think we really need to do that. Majority vote is still standard process. I just deleted that whole section because I didn't think it was necessary.
So, I'm sorry, Carl. So, if I understand what you just said, you're saying that if Vice Mayor Miles wanted to be the liaison to some commission, her vote wouldn't count when you were doing it?
Correct. That was pulling each individual person out.
So that, in effect, then you would have needed to have four out of six to, is that right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, you would, and then you'd also...
So this allows, so the rest of the ammendatory language allows all seven of you to vote, and only four of you are required to support it. So it's still a majority, but the liaison person regains their ability to vote.
Right. And it allows you to do it in one package instead of technically, by the wording of this language, you'd have to do each commission separately and each councilperson separately. So, striking that cleans that up, and then it allows, obviously, for appointment for as long as the council wants. So if the council wants to make that change, then they can make the change, so.
Okay, because I noticed this year there were some rollovers, if you will, in the same commissions, and so we were already doing that. But I do think there's a lot of merit to changing commissions, because you learn on every single one that you're a part of, and so I just would hate to see that type of process minimized.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, Mayor.
I was going to say, this was actually at the request of councilmembers. I asked Kit to poll all the councilmembers to see what area, what commission they wanted to serve on this year. You always try and put people with their passions, what they like to do.
Oh, I did.
Yeah.
All right.
That's how that came about.
I was just going to say that the staff recommendation of this is based on our understanding that there are individual members of council who want to serve more than one consecutive term as the liaison. To do that requires this change to be adopted.
Okay, but there'll still have to be a majority vote of council to approve it.
Correct.
Okay, as long as that's in there somewhere, I'm okay.
And the language written did change to this old language based on council direction, because we had, because people were camping on a certain commission and wanting to kind of force that change up. But I think, you know, as council changes, they obviously want to change what they want to do, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Then I move, we... You want to make a motion, please?
Adopt 5F. I think it's 5F.
On the consent agenda. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, items...
If I could, really quickly, just one quick trivial grammatical correction to the draft. Line one, where is the mayor and common and council have, not has?
I would call that a Scrivener's error, which will be corrected.
Thank you.
Moving on to item seven under New Business. Item A, Proposed Resolution Number 5120, Changing the Street Name of North Adams Street to Dollar Hyde Street. The subject street for the proposed name change is a portion of North Adams Street, which is located between East Gordon Drive and Coronado Avenue. The applicant is requesting that the road name for this portion of North Adams Street be changed to Dollar Hyde Street. The City of Kingman Fire Department and the Engineering Department object to the road name change due to possibility of emergency response being delayed because of the alignment and continuity of the existing streets. Staff recommends denial of resolution number 5120. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Okay, I'm here to represent or present the road name change as stated, from Adams Street to Dollar Hyde Street. The applicant is present tonight, and I did prepare a presentation if you'd like to see it.
Why don't you just go to the slide that shows the location, please?
If I know how to do this one. Okay. There we go. There we go. This one's nice and touchy.
I just think you went past it, I'm sorry.
I did, I apologize. It's very sensitive, there we are. Thank you. Here is the location of where the road name change will occur. Okay, well, I just was seeing if you had any questions for me. Let me just go back one slide then. So the requested action is to do a road name change for the portion of North Adams to be changed to Dollar Hyde Street. And then this was the section to be changed, right here. Here's a close-up. I'm not used to this slide, I apologize. Okay, here's a closer view of it, and the purpose of the road name change is that this road is actually blocked by the Mojave Wash at one point, and is like a cul-de-sac, so it dead-ends. And this is why the applicant is requesting to change it. There's vacant lots along this North Adams Street, where there's 12 lots, actually. One of them does have a house near on the end, which is actually addressed off of Coronado Avenue. Some of these lots are owned by the city, one is owned by the applicant, and two are owned by relatives of the client, who is actually related to the Dollar Hyde family. Okay. This is the plat that was originally recorded on in 1959. Property owners were notified, and like I said, there's 12 lots along this subject property, but the property owners were notified by first-class mail, and there was no objection. We did have comments from the City of Kingman Fire Department and Engineering Division objecting to the road name change due to the possibility of emergency response being delayed because of the alignment and continuity of the existing street. Section 4.1 of the Streets and Sidewalks Regulation states names per new street shall be consistent with the natural alignment and extensions of existing streets and shall not duplicate in whole or part, or be confused with existing street names within the greater Kingman area. Although this is not a new street, the intent would be similar for a road name change to keep a natural alignment and extensions of existing streets. So to reduce the potential confusion in the 911 system, staff is proposing not to change the name of North Adams Street to Dollar Hyde Street. Staff recommends denial of the resolution number 5021. And do you have additional questions for me or the applicant?
Thank you very much. Any questions of staff at this time? The applicant has signed up to address the council this evening, Mr. Gary Bowles.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name's Gary Bowles, and I want to thank you for allowing me to come up here and speak on this matter for the moment. I am requesting this name change, basically because, has everybody read the packets that was handed out, and understands why one of the name changed? So, basically what I'm looking at is that small fragment, a remnant of Adams Street being renamed. At this time, there's no houses or addresses assigned to it, and it's basically just been abandoned, sitting out there like a little orphan. It comes in an area that's bounded on Irving on the east, Stockton Hill on the west, Gordon on the north, and Keno on the south. And when these, when that subdivision was put in, they left out eight streets that had went through at one time. I think I mentioned that in the package. What I'd like to do is expand on 4.1. And 4.1 says that a street name shall be continuous in continuity throughout the whole existence of the street. But what I found is that, to clarify my point, and sharpen my point and position, that the city has already went against that order when they allowed Wallack Ranch and Legacy to abandon those eight streets. Because if it had went through as 4.1, then Legacy Road should be Kenneth Avenue, Wallack Ranch should be Skylark Avenue, because they both intersect with those roads, it should have been straight through, and they should have taken on those names, which they didn't. Other roads that have changed names and are in the same alignment, Stockton Hill Road and Wallop High Road, Harrison Willow, Beverly Avenue, Wilshire, Motor goes to Tatum, Davis goes to Hunt. So you see that there's a consistency that this isn't always followed as the norm, and it's been going that way for some time. And also, they may argue that because the roads inside the Wallack and Legacy Ranch turn, they've also went against that, too, because you can see in the maps that streets that follow through, such as Miami, Chicago, and stuff, once they pass the fairgrounds, they go into a neighborhood, turn, and they remain the same names. Okay. So that is my point, that I think that little fragment, it's not going to interfere if we rename it Dollar Hyde. And also, as for the 911 system, there are streets added to Kingman or leased addresses all the time, and along the area in question, again, there's no, there's no addresses. I'm sorry.
It's all right. Go ahead and finish your point, sir.
Oh. Also, I've got the utmost confidence in our EMS system that they would be able to find the area once addresses are added. It's like, again, it's a fragmented road, the emergency services are going to be able to find it once people start moving in on it. So, that's my point, and I don't think there'll be any confusion whatsoever. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions, sir, but I will say, it's not, it's not a compelling argument to me that we have violated our ordinance in the past, therefore, let's continue to do that. I feel sometimes it just really adds to the confusion. So I would like to, unless council has other questions, I would like to hear from the fire department, 911, and get an opinion on what we've done in the past and what maybe direction we need to take in the future. And sir, you'll have an opportunity to address the council, again, if you wish. Any other questions of the applicant at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Rhodes, could you kindly advise the council and the community why your department and the city objects to this?
So, yes, ma'am, and I apologize. Keith, Assistant Chief Eaton was working on this. He's on his way to Phoenix, or is in Phoenix, with having a grandbaby tonight, so he's been working on this. But from an overall perspective, one of our objectives is always kind of keep alignment geographically, because this is a contiguous street, although it takes some jogs and breaks through even like Wallack Ranch, it stops, it starts again. So we always try to keep those parameters. So we rely heavily on technology and mapping devices, but it's not always there. So we've got to have that layout in our head, that those streets are running this way, and it's between these parameters, because this is one of those, that even though Adams down on the south end takes a jog and it's way offline, we kind of line up. And if you look at it, it breaks, just like in many other cities, it'll break, but it's pretty contiguous throughout. So that's one reason that us in engineering agree on this, is trying to keep that somewhat in alignment as we go through our city. And I have the utmost faith in our EMS and responders as far as the technology beats in making changes if we need to. We just try to maintain that in the event that technology isn't available, and that mindset of our responders. So that's what we look at.
Thank you very much. Any other questions of staff?
I just underscore the observation of the mayor about inconsistency. I appreciate the work that the applicant did to identify the inconsistencies. And if he hasn't already shared that with the staff, that's actually homework for the staff to bring some of these streets into conformity with what the chief just said, because I agree absolutely with what he said about the importance of keeping the street name the same as it goes through the city, and that's unfortunately why the staff is where it is on this application. So we're still recommending denial of this item.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else in the audience wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, all entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny proposed resolution 5120.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'm going to echo what the interim city manager said. We thank you for your efforts and your research. Okay, go ahead and have a vote.
I just have one other comment. I really, I really like the idea of naming streets after pioneers, pioneer families as a way of preserving our history. You know, I have concerns about fire and things like that, too, but I just wonder if we couldn't maybe earmark this as a discussion for someday, when new streets are created, and maybe that's a priority that we make with new streets, is to name them after pioneer families.
We'd be glad to add that to the work session topic list, Councilmember Stanley. And one of the things that you need to be careful about with fire chiefs is you have to listen to them very carefully. Chief isn't opposed to having a street named the same, and for a historical person. What he objects to is having essentially the same alignment of a street named for two, three, or four different individuals. And so if there are streets in town that lend themselves to being, if you will, renamed in their entirety for historical figures in the city, that's something that we'd be open to having a conversation with this council about. And so we'll add that to the list of future study session topics.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second on the floor to deny resolution 5120. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Moving on to department reports. Do we have anything?
No.
This evening? Okay.
Is this where I can give a report on the planning and zoning?
No. It will be in just one, like, four seconds.
Thank you very much for clarification.
Announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager, limited to announcements available, attendance of conferences, seminars, reports for agenda items, and requests for agenda items for future meetings. Should this not also have the commission reports in here?
Well, I think I asked for that before. So I, can I...
Go ahead. Right, yeah, maybe just add some language. I'm sure this is just a template that they use, and we'll get that straightened out. So yes, please, your report now.
Oh, okay. Now I've got it. The planning and zoning meeting on the ninth, there was three new commission members, Charmaine Keith, Scott McCoy, and Elizabeth Goss. And they have nominated and elected Gary Fredrickson as chair and Terry Shores as vice chair.
That's great. Thank you very much for sharing that. Vice Mayor Miles, you have anything?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, the only announcement I wanted to make is just so that we all remember that we do have the town hall meeting next week here at 5:30. This is to invite and encourage public input regarding the TPT, which is Transaction Privilege Tax Increase Proposals. That's all I have this evening. Councilmember Yocum?
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Wade?
Thank you.
Councilmember Stanley? So finally, then, I, we have another one?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, can I make a request for a future work session agenda item here?
As soon as I get there.
Oh my gosh, I'm sorry.
Item 10, council request for, for, for future work session agenda items and/or calendar adjustments.
I sincerely apologize.
Not a problem.
I, I don't believe that council has received a full report on the delegation that went to Phoenix to meet with the governor's office, and I, I would like to have a presentation, I don't know if that's a work session topic or not, but there was a brief quote by Councilmember Wade, but that was all I ever saw about the, the outcome of that meeting, so, I'd, I'd like an update at some point on that meeting.
Staff would be fine putting it on as a work session item, but in the back of my memory, which isn't very deep anymore compared to 30 years ago, I remember, I wanna say Vice Mayor Miles giving a report at the first December meeting about the trip to Phoenix, which I think got reflected into the...
I think you were out.
The minutes of that, of that meeting, so.
I think you can look at the minutes.
Vice Mayor Miles, did I remember that correctly, or...
You did, you did.
I did give a short report during this time period, and, and that presentation is available online.
I'll watch the video.
Anyone else have any future work session topics?
Mayor Gates, members of council, just two things that I added tonight, so that you're aware. One is the renaming of city streets. Councilmember Stanley mentioned, I added to the 15th of May, and the commission appointment process to the 17th of April session, and then, earlier today, sent out the electronic version of the calendar, and that switches the annexation and interchange discussions with curbside recycling and pavement management, but when we put these two items on and circulate it tomorrow, you should have current calendars for future work session topics. That's it, thank you very much.
Councilmembers, daily?
Yeah, I have a, a request for an item in a work session, I apologize that I wasn't here at the last meeting.
That's okay.
I was out with the flu. Last January, the council came together and talked about our priorities, and we all chose downtown revitalization as a priority, but we really haven't taken any steps to do something about that. I would like to have a discussion about possible projects, about looking at funding maybe from the bed tax in order to improve tourism downtown, and just the, see where everyone else is at on what the city's commitment would be towards helping out either fixing up our own properties, or just being a part of the movement that is currently taking place.
Be glad to do that as a separate project, you should also know that I intend to talk about it in three weeks as part of economic development, and, and talk about selected neighborhoods, of which downtown is certainly one, that we, we do economic development activities, so I guess, my suggestion would be to wait for three weeks from now on the economic development one, and if you want to do additional discussion, be glad to schedule it for April, May, or...
That sounds good.
Okay?
I look forward to that, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'd like, an action item, not a work session item, but an action item for council liaisons to commissions for our first meeting, three weeks from today, first meeting in February, for our calendar year 18, or going forward.
I believe that's already on the agenda, we had to, we had to approve that change today.
It is, yeah. Councilmember Yocum's request perfectly understandable, we didn't want to put that on for your consideration before you took action on...
Right.
Whatever item F was, I think, right?
Absolutely.
The consent item, that you approved tonight, so it'll be on the next.
Anything else from council, any other requests? I think that's it for our business meeting. Having said that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you all for coming this evening.